Okay, good evening, everyone. I call the regular City Press Cup Council meeting to order. It is Monday, June 26th at 6:00. Uh, the roll call, Lindsey?
Here.
John?
Here.
Pat?
Here.
Maureen?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
And Dara is excused. Everybody stand and say a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, law, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Councilor C. Public comments on any issue related to the agenda. Limited discussion by council may take place. Okay, hearing time. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Library Board Meeting Minutes from April 20th. City Council Minutes from June 12th. Parks and Public Works from June 19th. We've got amplifier permit approval for 145 Broad Street, which is SCAB's. Sidewalk Cafe permit approval for 127 Broad Street Roadhouse. Sidewalk Cafe permit approval, 211 Broad Street per kitchen table. Approval of the agreement with Civics Plus for the renewal of the City of Prescott website and Resolution 33-23 informing the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources on the Prescott wastewater treatment plan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, on the SCAB's place, I noticed that they wanted an all-year-long uh, amplifier permit for their outdoor patio. Is, have we done that before, all year?
He may have not filled that out quite right. Um, did they do music inside during the meeting?
No, I don't know.
I doubt maybe you've been called there. So that's what he obviously put on there, so.
Like I said, I don't, I don't know if we have a answer if we've done that all year long before, or if we've done it before or not.
We haven't?
I don't know.
Oh.
So I think we'd have to look into that.
Yeah, I think we should look into that.
Yeah, would, yeah, just an inquiry. I don't mind them having an amplifier permit for the summer, but.
I'm guessing it's not all year long because even their outdoor.
Closes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
I'm guessing he just put something there, not knowing really what to put.
Mm-hmm. Would, would you follow up on that then?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If you had something, get it. Oh.
Okay, if there's no other questions, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. So this time, we're gonna have a public hearing. Hold the public hearing and take action on liquor license applications and fermented malt beverage applications for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. You need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to go into public hearing. Have there any questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Matt?
So, um, I guess if you wanna, do you wanna open it to public hearing first, or do you want me to, I guess Rochelle or I to give a brief overview? Do you wanna give a brief overview of that?
Um, well, is there anything specific other than what's in the memo that we put? So, there were, um, so every June 30th of every year, obviously liquor license expire. So they all, everybody who wants to renew their license needs to fill out their application. Um, that's liquor license, cigarette license, your amplifier permits, your sidewalk cafes, um, and then, um, operator's permits. And so everything goes through council or through chief for approval. And there's the attached list of all of the businesses that have applied. There is one in question that is having trouble getting an agent for their business, so I'm not sure if that's what's gonna happen with them. So, um, there was 146 operators license applications that were applied for that have been approved and the application, or the licenses will be printed and mailed out to all the businesses for those operators.
Which is the one that was having trouble finding an agent?
Enrique's. So they just have the Class B beer license. So, um, he's talked to a few people and nobody's agreed to do it for him, so.
What's the name of the, what's the name of the new bar downtown?
Prescott Tap. Two Rivers.
Prescott Tap.
Prescott Tap is the newest one down there.
Okay. Are, they're not on the list here, right?
Yes, they are. They're actually, um, I gotta pull up the.
Pierce Grill LLC?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And how about the Two Rivers? They're the first one?
They're the first ones listed.
Oh, now I see it, yeah, okay.
Yep. They operate under a larger group name.
Just curious, how would it work if Enrique's didn't come up with an agent? By the time the permit expires, I'm assuming then that they'd not be able to serve.
That's correct.
July 1st, is that right?
That is correct.
Does that mean they would forfeit that license? Or we would, do they then have time, let's say they get it by July 15th, they can retain it?
I don't know how the council has handled that in the past.
They, they only have a, um, they don't have the, the Class B though, do they?
They just have Class B, that's it?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's just a, that Class B beer license is all that they hold.
Hopefully we can find an agent.
Somebody knows somebody who can help them out.
I'll, I'll stop and have a conversation with them.
Okay.
Maybe send them down tomorrow or something.
Okay.
See if there's something we can work out.
That would be great.
Okay.
Cause I, I know they don't sell a lot of beer, but for people that do eat in around the deck.
I'd hate to see his business suffer.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move.
If, if you don't mind, if I could just. Come up to the podium, please, tell us who you are.
Sure.
How that's good stuff.
My name's Jeremy Bowles, and I have acquired or am purchasing the Old Bob and Steve's, the BP Gas Station and Liquor Store Downtown. It'll be named Triple J Liquor, and so I just wanted to take a minute, introduce myself, field any questions. Plans are to continue to run it, operate it as it is until I get my feet wet and see what kinda changes or things I can add or subtract to make things better for, for business in Prescott, so. Also plan on, I'm in the midst of purchasing the commercial property that houses Subway, Enrique's, the old Prescott Journal, and then adjoining residential rental property to that as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so any questions from council on me? I think they, they were gracious enough to help me through my first time around on paperwork, and I, they, they were, showed me where to sign the check and everything and make sure you had, had what you needed that way, so.
Welcome to town.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else on public hearing?
Motion to come out of the public hearing?
Second.
A motion and a second to come out of the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so do we need to take action on that?
I make a motion to approve the liquor license under state and the public notice from July 1st of 23 to the June 30th of 24.
Without, uh.
I would leave it as is for now, cause if they're able to get an agent, so.
Okay.
They've got till the end of the week.
If they're able to get an agent for Enrique's.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license applications and fermented malt beverage applications. Any questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, next item on the agenda, something for finance, Planning Commission. Next meeting is Monday, August 7th at 6:00. Parks and Public Works, uh, have a committee report, Bailey?
Sure, yep. So, just a high-level overview. So we covered well three, which we're gonna be discussing in this council meeting. Um, so basically looked at the different options and worked with John Strand and tried to ask a lot of great questions about why we would go with these options. So our committee chose to go with option three, which you'll be seeing here shortly. Uh, next, we covered the Locust Street sidewalk, so we had some public hearings regarding the project overall. Uh, some of the requests were that we would put in the sidewalk. Uh, with the project coming out that a way it was, we took it out as an alternate, so we're putting it back in now. We're covering the funds from various different places, but, um, that was something that obviously wanted to be done by the community, so we're following with that. Uh, the other thing that we're covering is, or covered was the compo sites. We're looking at maybe doing an automated approach to it, so having an automated gate where you can get a farcklet scan, scan and go in, so we can have better hours. I know that's been a thorn for a lot of our residents here that can't make it there within the allotted times. Uh, we also covered the Public Square Tennis Court remodel, so there are some things that need to happen there in terms of the surfacing for that tennis court. So we're looking at doing it the right way and getting the right spacing that we need to have, so it means extending out the tennis court from where it's at now. So just out, I think, what is it, 120 feet, something like that? So we're looking at that and looking at as part of reconstructing as the 24 capital budget. Uh, we did discuss ideas around the downtown riverfront planning. Um, we discussed removal of some shrubs. We're also looking at maybe adding parking, um, if it's possible with the grants that we did purchase some land with, um, if we can use it for that, just on the backside if we're creating more grain space potentially. So kinda more to come on that. And that's pretty much what we covered, and then the dumpsters from Two Rivers, to see when they're gonna get those covered as well. So basically just high level on the riverfront and, yeah.
Okay. Right. Uh, the next Parks and Public Works meeting is Monday, July 17th at 5:00. Health and Safety, next meeting, Monday, July 10th at 5:00. Personnel, next meeting, Wednesday, August 2nd at 5:00. Next item on the agenda is Communications and New Business. The City Council will receive public comments on any issue not related to the agenda. Limited discussion by the council may take place, however, no action will be taken on any item. This includes receiving written requests or documentation and possible action at future consideration. Okay, hearing time. Next item on the agenda is Prescott Pickleball Courts. Part A, Resolution 34-23, awarding the contract to Monarch Paving for asphalt paving of the Public Square Parking Lot Expansion, the amount of $12,450. And then Part B is Resolution 35-23, awarding the contract to KNS Driveway Guys for the color coding installation of posts and nets for two pickleball courts at Public Square Park, the amount of $12,450.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 34-23 and Resolution 35-23.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 34-23 and 35-23. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll need a roll call. Lindsey?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 36-23, awarding the alternate bid number two for sidewalk for Locust Street from Walnut to Walter Street to Haas Sons Incorporated, in the amount of $66,311.90.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 36-23, awarding the alternate bid for the sidewalk on Locust Street.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 36-23. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not, Bailey?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lindsey? A motion carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is well number three, remediation. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Um, sorry to slow this train down. We wanted to give all this information, cause we did feel as important as we haven't been able to give an update for this for a while. So just give a timeline of how we got where we're at. So September 24th to 2021, we had to shut down our well number three due to tests exceeding nitrate's MCL levels of 10 milligrams per liter. On November 8th, council approved an engineering report to be done by CBS Squared. And then April 25th of 2022, from that engineering report CBS Squared did for us, we approved full design and construction administration for remediation of well number three by reverse osmosis. The DNR then approved that on May 31st of 2022. Um, of January of 31st of this year, then we applied for funding through the emerging contaminants program that was newly started by the DNR to remediate PFOS in drinking water sources. Then on March 14th, 2023, USCPA released proposed national health drinking water standards for PFOS at four parts per trillion. Sorry, Bay, you can't look at me like that, I don't wanna start, start laughing. Uh, May 15th, 2023, City of Prescott begins the pilot study for well number three remediation by water surplus, and then June 23rd, which is just last Friday, that waters, that pilot study was completed, and we did turn that into the DNR, and that was the final piece of the puzzle the DNR was waiting for, to fully, uh, consider our application to the emerging contaminants funds. So with all that being said, how does that wrap into some design considerations that we were considering then throughout this process? First, um, first and foremost, we had to come up with a process that treated nitrates that exceeded 10 milligrams per liter, which we have done so through, uh, the choosing of reverse osmosis. However, additionally PFOS testing at well number three, which we started doing in May of 2022, has, for PFOA levels have ranged from 4.85 parts per trillion to 6.1. Um, as a result, the city did work with CBS Squared to develop five alternates to cover both the potential for treatment of nitrates and PFOS. Um, on March 14th, however, with the new updated levels, um, we did drop alternates one and two from the design consideration, however, they are in the packet tonight for those who are interested in reviewing those. The reason those two were dropped is those alternates were both looking at if PFOS, um, MCL level of four parts per trillion was much lower, so as it is four parts per trillion, we ended up cutting one and two from consideration. So finally, in review of the alternates of three through five, um, we did have some concerns about the reverse osmosis, osmosis concentrated water. This is the water that is left over after you push the water through the reverse osmosis membranes, um, and then what do we do with that water in terms of options? Um, right now, based on testing, that wastewater is up to 27 parts per trillion. It does fall under the 70 parts per trillion, that is the current standard for wastewater within the state of Wisconsin, so the DNR has said that we have three options of what we could do with it. Place in the storm sewer, uh, which would go to the Mississippi River, send it to the treatment plant, although again, that would sit in the biosolids that then gets treated, so the concern is then if those products that as they're used, um, they would just end up back potentially in the aquifer. And then we could return it to the aquifer itself. Um, right now, our concern would be, um, a lot of the wastewater standards lie behind the drinking water standards, so in the future, are we designing something that potentially we're just gonna have to come back in two to three years that we're gonna have to add something to deal with that wastewater? So those are the design considerations that we looked at. So as a result, um, first design is alternate three. This has a project estimate of 3.8 million. Um, as you look at the screen here, you can see this bottom portion, that is the reverse osmosis skids. The water gets pushed through these two skids through a membrane, um, and that removes the nitrates and the PFOS. That RO concentrated water in this alternate actually gets then sent up to two GAC filters that are at the top here, so that treated, or that concentrated water then is actually treated itself, and the PFOS are brought down considerably lower than what they were, um, before, so then that would allow us to potentially consider all those options with a little bit more, um, or a little less concern for future levels that might be set for wastewater that contains PFOS and other contaminants. Option four, which is just over 3 million, doesn't take and affect any of the GAC processing at all for wastewater. It just oversizes, or it just adds in addition for well number three where the two RO skids are put in. Uh, we still have that, that issue then of, or maybe it's not an issue, that's I guess the, the discussion and part of the process that's being had, but what we do with that RO concentrated water moving forward, in terms of where does it go? The one thing to note as well, um, in terms of that excess water, if we're sending it to the wastewater treatment plant, it does add to our overall load. We're already starting to look more and more that we're getting closer to capacity, so just the amount of load that we added, and then taking the consideration potential expansion of our business park and what businesses may be there specifically if it is a high-water user, all those things are kinda factored into what we were looking at when making these, um, design considerations. And then alternate number five, project estimate 3.3 million dollars. In this example, it's basically kind of a cross, or a middle ground between alternate three and alternate four. We have the building size, same size as alternate three, however, the GAC vessels aren't there, so that would be future, potential addition that we could do if, um, those new standards ever came, that we could add those two GAC vessels, and then of course, we have the RO treatment itself. So looking at a emerging contaminant program, um, the current cost that we have in our water rate study that was approved, we have 1.7 to 1.8 million in well number three. So if you look at alternate number three, we have 3.8 million. Um, right now, the emerging contaminant program is specifically designed for treatment of PFOS. Um, we could qualify for up to 70% principal forgiveness, um, which would be 1.15 million, which would leave the city costs, or that would be the city cost. The concern that we have in talking with the DNR, or the discussion, I guess I should say, with the DNR, has been that since we're not only treating for PFOS and for nitrates, they don't believe that they, that we might qualify for both, although our engineer CBS Squared is trying to make that case, and is making that case to them, that, um, this is a fully, uh, system that treats for PFOS, so that they think we should fully qualify for the 70%, however, that will be a DNR decision when they review our application. So if we only get 50%, this third alternate would be, our portion would be 1.9 million. And you look at the other two alternates, um, for the RO treatment and no building oversized, our portion at 70% would be 904,000, at 50% 1.5 million. Um, and then for the RO treatment, and then oversizing the building for future concentrated treatment through GAC, would be 999,000 for 70%, and then 1.6 million for 50%. So the decision tonight really won't lock in the city to any firm decision moving forward, however, this decision does, um, basically mean what we're submitting to the DNR for consideration as part of funding through the emerging contaminants program. Once we get a final decision through the Wisconsin DNR on our application, that approval of design and financing will be brought back before the council for final decision. Um, and then finally, Parks and Public Works, as Bailey had mentioned, reviewed this at their last meeting last Monday, and, uh, recommended alternate option number three. So with that, there's a resolution before you tonight, 37-23, uh, with the recommendation of approving alternate number three, design for submitted to the Wisconsin DNR through the emerging contaminants program. So I'll turn it over to council for comments and questions.
You already know I'm gonna head it right up with the EPA. So the EPA made a recommendation, it needs to be brought into law by Congress. You cannot just have the EPA randomly state, so I don't know when that's gonna happen and when these are gonna occur. Same thing with the DNR. So state needs to basically enact a law stating that this is the new requirement, that has not been done yet, I don't know when it's on the agenda to go, so I'm not sure what the timeline is for this. And then additionally, the additional funding that I had sent regarding the other cases that are kinda going on in the agreement to pay out municipalities, so will we be at a, if we go now, I mean, I know the DNR is kind of like, this is what we're approving right now, but if we lose out on potentially other funding, if we would not be able to get that because we did it this way, that's the only thing I'm wondering. But this all just came out within like the last two days, so.
So the only, I guess the only thing I would add to that is the emerging contaminant program for this first cycle, which is ending on June 30th of this year, um, doesn't have a restriction on income levels. The Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, one of the things when we applied for that, they offer principal forgiveness if you have a certain income threshold and below for your community, your median household income. Unfortunately, ours was over that, so we didn't qualify for any principal forgiveness. So what we're working on in terms of getting this funding here tonight is that basically, because this is the first round, they haven't implemented any of those median household income restrictions yet, so we would be at somewhat at advantage from that point of view, from continuing with this path. However, as Councilmember Rona stated, I don't know how all this will intersect with potential funding in other avenues.
I think that even though we, this has become quite contentious, whether to go after the PF, PFs?
PFs.
PFs. PFs. Yet, I still think they are chemicals that do not decompose in our bodies, and, and I, I think we should move ahead with number three.
The only beef that I have with them is that they're basically saying we have to do this, but then they're saying you can dump it in the river, you can put it back into an aquifer. It's like, what crackpot is making these decisions telling us that's okay? So that's the thing that I had issues with, is like, they're, they're stating the front end, but on the back end, they're not really, they're like, well, the current guideline is, well, the current guidelines back in the day, you used to go over there, right?
Yeah.
Where it's like, I don't want it, I wanna go in back in aquifer, I don't wanna go in on the Gulf.
No.
You know, especially when you start going down into Louisiana, the backwaters back there, and like all the fishing that goes.
I thought that's with this.
The GAC basically gets, how much is it 90, they're saying, but they can't, they don't actually have like the resolution for what that's actually gonna collect to what would be through that.
Should you say like what level would bring it down to, through the GAC?
Yeah, the GAC brings it down to like, he said nine, I don't wanna say.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember offhand.
I believe it's 90%, so then whatever's past that would not get captured, but then, then they can basically remove that carbon filter and it goes into a deep plastic bag, deep, deep down in the ground, and then gets buried.
A hazard site, yes.
Yeah.
So the GAC, the, the, and I'm not, I'm not a, a junior, but basically the median that takes the, the PFOS out and collects it, then that gets collected and gets disposed on a, like a toxic site.
Sweet site.
Just disposed of properly and can't enter into any water source.
I'm sorry, where do we, where does it dispose of?
Usually, so Rosno, Rosno has a, like, if you're going out towards 42 and you're going towards 52?
Yeah.
Right before you hit 52, on the left-hand side, south side, you can see that if it's close enough to the road, they have big black bags. That's a hazmat drop site, so basically hazmat gets put into these thick-milled bags and get buried in the ground for their life.
Jeez.
Or you can incinerate it, I don't know what kind of incinerators are on, again, I don't know what kind of guidelines they're gonna come out with, cause they haven't completed their thought on how to handle all this, in my opinion. But, yeah, so that's the big piece, and I think the, the good thing about this is that our guys just detach it, wear the bag, so the probability hopefully of them seeing a higher concentration of people handling things on our side is gonna be lower risk. But again, the back end, they have not thought about basically, they wanna do with everything, cause they're telling people they can shove it back in the river, or an aquifer, which is stupid.
Yeah, no, we don't wanna do that.
And I think that's the overall, that's the overall concern, is that eventually the drinking water standards are first, and then eventually the disposal or the wastewater standards are gonna come second, and we don't wanna design something where we're back here in, you know, two, three, four years, that.
Right.
Trying to determine how to do.
I'll look for a motion.
Uh, motion to approve alternative three?
For Resolution 37-23.
Oh, well, I can't find the resolution, so somebody else will help me with that.
It's, uh, Resolution 37-23, approving the alternate number three design for submitted to the Wisconsin DNR for emerging contaminants program.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 37-23, approving the alternate design number three for submitted to the Wisconsin DNR for emerging contaminant program. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not Bailey?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Okay, we don't have any closed session, any other business?
Here it is. Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.